Good morning, everyone. It's Monday, August 25th, 2025, and we're here this morning for a work session. And our discussion item is a work session regarding financing details for the Ranch Master Plan. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. With me is my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner John Kofalas, and we expect Commissioner Jody Shattuck-McMally soon. We have our County Manager with us, Lorinda Volker, and a big audience and a lot of people at the table today, so I won't be introducing everybody, but I'll ask you to introduce yourself as you speak. And I'm going to turn things over to Lori Lopez, Director of Finance. Connor McGrath is also here, Director of the Ranch, and we look forward to the discussion. So welcome, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Lori Lopez, the Finance Director for the County, and we are here today. We've brought many experts into the room today to talk with you about how the financing will work for Phase 2A of the Ranch's master plan. And Stiefel, the folks from Stiefel are going to kick it off, but I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and then as other people chime in, we can introduce them as well.
There you go. Stacy Mast from Stiefel, and we're serving as municipal advisor to the county specifically on this financing. We prepared a few slides that we'll go through today, and please feel free to jump in with any questions as we go through this. The county is currently contemplating issuing certificates of participation to finance Phase 2A, as Lori said, of the Rex, of the Ranch project. So below, we've outlined a kind of structure of the COPs. So certificates of participation, or as we often call them, COPs, is a financing vehicle that many issuers, many local governments use throughout Colorado. And it's allowed under Tabor because of, it's an annually appropriated, so it's not a multi-year fiscal obligation. It's set in the budget every year that you will appropriate funds to make the payments on the certificates of participation. And with that, there's also a backing of collateral or a lease pledge. And right now, that's currently contemplated to be the Ranch complex. That would be the collateral that's pledged. So if payments are not made, then the asset would transfer to the trustee to try and recoup some of those payments. Ashley can go into this more, too, but it's kind of the financing documents that accompany this transaction. So there is also a site lease that goes for 10 years after. And then, so that investors give 10 years after the anticipated final maturity to try and, if a non-payment is done, made, to try and get some of those funds back. And then after that, the property goes back to the county. Right now, the county does have a AAA rating by Standard and Poor's, and that's, it's kind of issuer credit. If you were to issue general obligation bonds, you have a AAA rating. There is a one notch differential for certificates of participation because of that annual appropriation risk, so similar to the 2019 COPs that were AA+. We anticipate the same rating outcome for these COPs at AA+. So the highest rating you can have on a COP. So...
Yeah, Commissioner Kofalas has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Yes, it still is morning. My question is in regards to the security provision of the financing, the certificates of participation. It says the collateral, of course, is provided by the assets, the properties at the Ranch. It says certain components of the Ranch campus with a combined value up to about $110 million. Have those buildings, facilities been identified? And is that something that is important to know? And how was the value determined of those that would add up to $110 million?
Yeah, I'll let Ashley Wade, who's doing the tax analysis, from QTAC.
All right. Good morning, every, is that on? Good morning, everyone. My name is Ashley Dennis, and I am a partner at QTAC Rock. We serve as bond counsel to the county. So yes, Commissioner, it's a really great question. The components of the leased property have been identified, and they are, so those will be named in the leasing documents that will be available to the BOCC in connection with the consideration of the resolution. It currently includes Blue Arena, the Equestrian facility with both indoor arenas there. The maintenance building is included. The, I am blinking. We're missing one. Yes, Peterson is also included. Thank you, Connor. And so what we look at when we're building that security ticket to the $110 million, that's the target. We want the security, the approximate value of the leased property to near the principal amount of the COPs. We do have a buffer. It's about 10% up or down. And so the county can look at that in a lot of different ways when determining the valuation of the facilities. We can look at replacement value. We can look at insured value. We can, and I should stress that a lot of deference is given to our issuers when we're determining the value. What we're trying to aim for here is the county's ability to reasonably state on an annual basis that the rental payments that you're making under the lease purchase agreement are reasonable in connection with the leased property that you're getting in return. So as long as we can state that with full confidence, and it's a reasonable statement to make on an annual basis, if we don't exactly get to 110, and here we don't, we don't exactly get to 110, we're within that 10%, I think slightly less, that is acceptable under Colorado law. This is a Tabor consideration. We want to make sure that the value that you're putting into this transaction is the value that you're getting out, so that there isn't any sort of economic compulsion to renew the lease on an annual basis. We want the BOCC to have the ability to make this decision each year and to not feel compelled to renew the lease because of a value issue. So here, we believe that we have struck that balance. We think that we've gotten as close to the 110 as needs to be without encumbering any additional property of the county.
Great. Thank you very much, Ashley. That is helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ashley? Okay.
Correct.
We're good. Thank you, Stacy.
On page three, because of some of the complexities with the Ranch Center, how it's operated, there has been some analysis done where whether some of the COPs need to be issued on a taxable basis. So do you, do you want to go through that now or after?
Let's save that discussion for...
Okay, perfect. Which we'll go into in a little bit more further detail in a little bit, but just wanted to put that out there for your consideration. Taxable transactions price slightly different than tax exempt at a slightly higher interest rate, as investors don't achieve that benefit, so they require a higher interest rate in return. However, the plan is to amortize the taxable COPs prior to the tax exempt COPs to minimize the overall impact to the county. And so as we go through on the next page, our financing term that we're looking at right now is to 2039, and this aligns with the current sales tax that the county has outstanding that goes to support the Ranch. And right now, we're also kind of looking at where exactly how much these COPs need to be taxable versus tax exempt, based on preliminary analysis from QTAC, which they are still finalizing. We ran a scenario that has 25% taxable and 75% tax exempt. So overall, with the 25% taxable, that amortizes the taxable COPs within just six years. I think what's really important over, there's a lot of, a lot on this page, but I really want to point you to, is kind of this aggregate column at the far right-hand bottom of the page, that table. So the overall financing is 15 years. We're still looking to borrow $110 million of certificates of participation that, due to how they're structured, we have some premium that's generated. So net proceeds to the county would be $117 million. That would go towards the project. The all-in borrowing cost right now is 4.15%, and that's taking into account the taxable and the tax exempt. So still, it's still much lower than probably you hear of a mortgage or other things like that, and that's because of the benefit of that tax exemption. Our annual payment is a little over $11 million. Total repayment for 110 million of COPs at these rates is about $155 million. And then, like we said, final maturity is December 1st, 2039, to align with that sales tax expiration. So that's what we're being very, very mindful of with the structuring of these.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I should have looked it up, but under taxable COPs, $27.5 million. Everything you said makes sense. Thank you. There are two acronyms that are used there, UST yields and MMD index.
Yes.
I'm afraid I'm not a financing person. I'm just a simple county commissioner. Please explain.
Yes. UST is United States Treasuries, and that is the benchmark that's used for taxable. Since that's a taxable rate, we price off of that. MMD is Municipal Market Data, and that's our tax exempt kind of almost equivalent yield that we use to price off that. So that's the way, that's where everything prices to a spread off these yield curves. So to find, so you can compare structures. So we can say, how is Laramore County's COP is going to price to another, you know, Adams County COPs? And it should price better because you have a better rating, so lower spread to that yield curve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you explain again why you wouldn't go with all tax exempt COPs?
Yes. This is more of a tax side, tax question, and that's because of some of the uses at the Ranch Center now have some private components of it. So it really boils down to tax analysis and the tax opinion that QTAC has to provide on the tax exempt COPs, and being comfortable with that and having everything line up with the taxable component. With the private use, it does give the Ranch probably more flexibility in the end, but we want to make sure that that is, that lines up with uses and everything. So that's what Ashley and her team have been working on.
Yeah, and I would just add that the IRS loves arenas. They love arenas as much as they love jails and other entities that might have private components to it. So we're particularly careful when we have...
They love it for auditing purposes?
They love auditing, they love auditing arenas. It gets pulled for random audits quite frequently, and they aren't truly random, but they're random within the category of arenas. And so the analysis that we've done so far, and we should point out, I believe Stacy mentioned it, but we should point out that the numbers that you're looking for, you're looking at currently as far as the tax exempt and the taxable, these are the worst case scenario. So as we continue that analysis, as we continue to tighten the numbers, that we expect the tax exempt allocation to increase, the taxable allocation to decrease, and that's going to just depend on a couple of things that we're, a couple of items that we're continuing to check off the list. But it won't, it won't be any worse than the allocation that you're looking at currently. But knowing what we know about the IRS and knowing how much they adore auditing these particular transactions, we are particularly careful when we look at the tax analysis in this, in this structure. The current use of the facilities have been carefully, carefully monitored by your team here, and we are comfortable with the vast majority of the components of the project as tax exempt uses. But there are certain uses within Blue Arena in particular that we're taking a very careful look at, because we understand that if it gets pulled for an audit, it's going to be under heightened scrutiny. And what we do not want to do is put the county in a position where bad use, we call it bad use, it's not bad use, where private use exceeds the amount that's allowable for tax exempt financing, which could cause the entire transaction to go taxable, and that would cause a very big headache for the county. So we are very careful in this analysis, and the recommendation that we're putting forward, as I mentioned, this is, this is the worst. We expect it to get better, but we are recommending that so that we can deliver a tax exempt opinion, state with full... can deliver a tax exempt opinion, state with full confidence that the conclusions that we're reaching on the tax analysis are reasonable, and that it contemplates not only the current use of the facilities, but the anticipated use of the facilities and any flexibility that the county might need. So when we look at this analysis, we're looking at things such as leases with private entities. Here it would be a team. It would be sponsorships, naming rights, concessions agreements. And Blue Arena has quite a few of those. So we want to be very careful. And like I said, you have an amazing team, and they've already put the work in, and they've already sort of crafted those agreements with these things in mind. We just were very, very careful, and it enables us to deliver that tax exempt opinion at closing.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate that. So it's based on what we've done in those facilities previously and what we anticipate. And I guess what we anticipate, we should be somewhat careful on not going over a certain.
Yep.
Okay.
So this analysis is gonna-
Glad that you're all keeping track of that, because.
Yes, and your team is. Your team is very aware, very aware of things to look out for, very aware of areas that might trip us up in the future. The tax analysis lives for the duration of the COPs themselves, and so this is going to be a consideration until 2039. But your team is very well aware of that and will know the items to look out for, and we're always around to if any questions come up in, in the future. But we're, it's a bit of studying the past and, and learning the history of the county's use of those facilities and also staring into our crystal ball and sort of anticipating what the county might want to do in the future. And the analysis is structured in that way to give you that flexibility while minimizing the amount that has to go taxable. So again, worst-case scenario in front of us here, we do expect these numbers to shift around a little bit, but it is something that we keep a very careful eye on.
Thank you. Thanks for that in-depth explanation. I appreciate that. Commissioner Shadak McCallie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lots of, lots of questions, but I, one that's kind of at the top of my head right now, you talked about the tax analysis going through 2039, and in kind of mentioning our amazing team, which I agree with you, they're, they've really got a handle on this, and we're very fortunate to have the folks that we have working for Laramo County. But that being said, having the right people in the right place doing the right things, and even with a great plan, you know, maybe in 10 years, I won't be here. I don't know. Maybe a lot of people won't be here. I don't know. And so curious if this analysis is set so it's very clear for anyone who sits in any of these seats or any of these positions that they understand kind of the nuances and challenges going forward. Is my question kind of clear?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So the county will execute what's called a tax-compliant certificate at closing, as well as an omnibus certificate and other closing certificates that are going to put these considerations down on paper. If there is ever new people in place that need to know what these considerations are and need to know what to look out for in the future, we're going to document that for you in the, in the final transcript. And so that's going to be really important. As you point out, Commissioner, things change. Plans can change. Things can move around. People can move in and out of positions. And so the documents do contemplate having that information available at our fingertips for anyone who's staring at the transcript. We also, as your bond counselor, are available for questions at any time in the future. If anything comes up, if you're contemplating a new contract, if, if you're looking at a new lease or anything along those lines, we'd be happy to pick up the phone, pick up a phone call at any time to make sure that we're giving you guidance through that. That comes with the tax exempt opinion that you're getting. And so we're definitely here for you in the future with respect to plans changing. And I do want to note that our initial analysis, which again is worst-case scenario, but our initial analysis does include what I would call a cushion for incidental private business use that might occur in the future. You know, the county can decide how much of a cushion you want, but if there is a need to do a new contract in the future that might push us above what, what private use we were contemplating as of today, we take that into consideration when we run the analysis. I should also state, because I don't think I mentioned it at, at the start, that tax exempt financings, the IRS does allow a 10% cushion, a 10% allocation to bad, to private use. And that, that 10% threshold is for things like incidental uses, if you have to sign a new concessions agreement, things of that sort. It can be allocated to the 10%. We call it a threshold. And I promise I will stop saying bad use. It is not bad use, but for purposes of delivering a bond opinion, that's kind of our very basic kindergarten way that we, that we look at these buckets. It's not bad use. It is really good use. But it's private use, and it's, it's something that works against the tax exemption. So it has been contemplated, and we will continue contemplating it, and we're here for you in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else before we move on? Okay.
Perfect.
Keep going.
Page five, it just kind of shows kind of how this would look for the county in terms of tax exempt and taxable COPs, and then the aggregate debt service that we're looking at on the far right. So you can see the taxable COPs pay first because they have a higher interest rate than the tax, tax exempt COPs. And overall, we're just looking at level repayment. So hopefully, sales tax does continue to increase, but we're just looking at level annual, level repayment for these COPs.
I ask a question about, so, so sales tax obviously will be helping us repay. At some point, when things get built, that will also, you know, some of those funds will also be used. Are you contemplating that, kind of like that, that will start generating more income from these things as they're built, and, and that will also help with payment?
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. Connor McGrath, Director of the Ranch. Thank you, Commissioner. Correct. We, we see on average, we don't love to state water sales and use taxes because obviously it varies, but on average, we receive about $14.5 million a year on the 0.15% sales and use tax. You can see here in the worst-case scenario, our annual payment to the COPs is approximately 11 million. In worst case, in best case, I would like to see that get closer to $10.5 million. So we have that, that cushion between what we're bringing in and what we're, or paying back on the debt servicing. Once we get the facility stabilized, which ranges, depending on the facility, between year three to year five, we would then see a larger bucket of reserves. We would like to do two things with those. One, accomplish some pay-as-you-go projects that we have discussed with you and your colleagues in the past, and then build a reserve fund. So by the year 2039, the Ranch has a reserve fund to account for years of underperformance or years where it's out of our control for underperformance, such as COVID, or to reap those investments off of the, the funds that we have in the reserve account to then either reinvest or to pay for the pay-as-you-go projects.
What are we thinking about sales tax these days? Are there any, is there, I'm asking you to pull out your crystal ball, but I mean, you know, it seems like they're somewhat flat right now. Is that what we anticipate into the future?
We, we're, to be conservative, yeah, and to answer your question, yes, we're a little bit flat. We have, we've noticed a slight increase in sales tax, but it's, it's not significant. But we are anticipating, and we projected flat growth over the years just to be conservative when we're paying this, when we pay down the debt. But we wanted to be conservative. And our sales tax manager, right now, it's just driving her nuts because she's, she's trying to use her, her crystal ball and figure out where we are. And, but for right now, it's, it's fairly flat, but we did use conservative amounts. We structured the-
So anticipating maybe to stay flat and we're still good?
Yes.
Obviously, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Shadak McCallie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And maybe I missed this at the beginning. I'm curious what, if it's flat this year, where are we at? What is collected or what last year, what was the amount?
It did. If I turned it on. So over the, in 2024, we collected about 20, or 14.5 million for the ranch, and we're using that with maybe a slight increase in, in, in future years. For 2025, I believe we left it flat.
Thank you.
All right. We'll keep, keep going.
So today, we're here just to talk to you about COPs, what's coming up, answer any questions that you may have. There's no ask of, of anyone today. Just all informational. We do have a rating call with Standard &amp; Poor's scheduled for later this week. And then right now, we are anticipating how, there's a board meeting to approve the financing potentially September 3rd.
I think it's the 2nd.
Oh, 2nd. And at that meeting, you'd be asked to consider a parameters resolution. And a parameters resolution says, kind of lays out all the documents and sets parameters for if the financing falls within these, these interest rates, this amount, total repayment, that you're comfortable delegating authority to the finance director, I believe Lori, to execute the financing on behalf of the county. So that's, that's for next, next week at this time. After that, we anticipate we would receive the rating back from Standard &amp; Poor's September 9th. We don't anticipate any changes from the stellar rating that the county currently has. We're looking to post the preliminary official statement to investors on September 25th, and that's the document that's used to market the transaction to investors. That is going to be in the market for a couple of weeks. And then October 7th is currently when we're anticipated to price the COPs. And you have Nate Eckloff here with Piper Sandler. They're engaged as the underwriter. So their team would actually be selling, marketing the transaction, along with our, our underwriting desk and our team would be, you know, saying these are good rates, or we sign off on these with the county. And then looking to close on October 14th, and that's the date when funds would be received to the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Follis, do you have a question?
Yes, please. Thank you. Just in looking at the, the financing schedule, I just want to double check because I looked at my calendar. It says September 3rd, board meeting to approve financing. Is, is that meant to occur during an administrative matters meeting? If that is the case, that would be September 2nd.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. It's September 2nd. We, we anticipate it to be approved at a, an admin matters meeting, so we'll get that date changed.
Yes.
But this indicates the 3rd.
Yes.
That's, this is a mistake. We'll fix this page.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions? Commissioner Shadak McCallie? I think I asked this question in a previous meeting, but I'll ask it again. Does this affect our ability to, and you know, not necessarily that I'm anticipating it, but to issue COPs for another project or to, you know, to, nope. Okay. So I just wanted to know, you know, make sure that if, especially like in an emergency situation or something like that, that we might have to do something like that. That wouldn't affect, and, and it will, so it won't affect our ability to, as long as we have the collateral, I suppose.
Yes. That's the biggest, that's the biggest key with, you have, you have a lot of funds. You guys are a very healthy county. I think the biggest thing with, in, with COP projects is making sure you have sufficient collateral.
Which was absolutely taken into consideration when we were choosing the components of the leased property here. We are encumbering the least amount of property necessary in order to meet that valuation that we were talking about at the top of the meeting. So but there is no particular pledge of revenues in a COP stream. There is no, so it's legally, any legally available funds. Here we know it's coming from the sales and use tax revenues. Those types of considerations as far as financing will always be taken into consideration when it's time to issue new COPs. But the fact that we're talking about this transaction now does not in any way limit the county's ability to enter into other financings in the future.
And will we keep the AAA rating with?
We certainly expect so. We certainly, certainly hope so.
Yes.
Nate Eckloff, Managing Director at Piper Sandler. I would say, I think Stacy, it'd be in agreement, we'd expect the county to maintain its rating. You're, you're very well-operated, very well-run, financially strong. We see nothing here that would impair your rating.
That's great, great news. Thank you very much. That's due to a lot of the people who are sitting in this room, so we're appreciative of all their work to make that happen.
And Commissioners, when Lori and I were filling out the initial information before we really got started with this, we were really careful to be, to disclose that that could happen. We didn't anticipate it. We don't have a plan for it, but it is something we disclosed very, very early on.
All right. Did we have anything further? I know we have some-
There's some, a few slides to comment about the market in general. We don't need to go into that unless you're right to have any questions. I wish, I'm like this wall for interested.
But if there are questions about the market in general, I would be happy to address them as well as Nate.
I think we have tons of questions about the market.
And I guess, what are the potential implications pending any changes in the, from the Federal Reserve Board regarding?
Yeah. So how our market generally works is investors predict what's about to happen based on current economic data, reading the minutes, whenever federal, any federal chairman speaks, they kind of analyze every word they say. So right now, they've actually already kind of, we call it priced into the market, a future, two future rate cuts to happen this year. So any interest rates you see right now already factor in any potential cuts in rates.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Shadak McCallie.
Yeah, I'm hoping you'll pull out your unicorns or magic wands and your crystal balls real quick, because I'm reading some of these statements and, and the market analysis on page, or forecast, and, and just some of these rates. And knowing that also we have a special session and certain things are happening, changes, just feels, my comfort level of uncertainty is pushing its limits. So I'm curious, that's all kind of built into here, as, as you said, but I just needed to ask that question. That's, I mean, worst-case scenario, I mean, this is kind of accounted for that, right?
Yeah.
And I hate to even think about the worst-case scenario. I'm really hopeful, optimistic kind of gal, but you know, I listen to maybe too many podcasts on the way to work, and so it gets me thinking. So I'm wondering, worst-case scenario, this cushion and everything that you have thought of kind of gives us, I think you were flexibility cushion, just maybe kind of, kind of reassure me of that?
Yeah, I think the tax analysis piece, they're providing cushions, so hopefully it gets better. We believe our interest rates in here are also conservative, so we anticipate with, you know, the Piper team, it just gets better. It's really hard to know when to borrow and when to time the market. We usually tell investors, don't time the market. You really should borrow when you need to borrow. As you saw, you know, you still, you're still going to get around 4% borrowing costs, which is, which is great. And that just takes one risk off the table, and you can complete your project. So it is always hard. I think uncertainty has been the word of the year. But we do feel very confident in, in this transaction that the county is presenting forward.
I'll comment just real briefly, too. I know this is, as of this morning, as Stacy indicated, there's indication of two rate cuts before year end. We're looking perhaps about 85% of percent chance now in September. It was maybe as high as 90-some percent last week, but they're saying 85% for a rate cut in September, and then a second rate cut in December is what's planned at this point. There are some economic things coming out, though, like jobs reports and a variety of economic news that could impact whether or not the rate cuts actually do occur. But there, that's what's fully expected at this point. I think it's fair to say, currently today and over the next couple of weeks anyway, until the middle of September, when this is all maybe supposed to happen, that we're seeing fairly calm waters now. But if the employment data is bad, that type of thing, it could throw things off. We, we've kind of joked lately, the last six months to a year, that we're one tweet away from the market doing something crazy. But at this point, we're seeing fairly calm waters and expect the same.
Thank you.
And then just from the bond side, and that is your finance team speaking, and we don't give any financial advice, but your lawyers didn't do that. You don't want your lawyers to do that. But just on the, on the bond and documentation side, we should add, we call this the event of a water landing, right? Like if that tweet comes out and something happens, your authorizing resolution that we're asking you to approve next week does authorize the delegation to our finance director to sign a purchase agreement within one year of the adoption of the resolution. So if something were to happen, that, the water landing, right? No one expects to get wet. But if, if the water landing happens and the financing needs to be delayed, the authorization contemplates a year, you have the authorization in place for a year if we need to wait for the market to, to come back to us and, and for more favorable conditions. So by adopting the resolution next week, you're not locking the county into anything. You're giving the green light. You're not pressing the pedal. you're giving the green light, you're not pressing the pedal, and then we can, we can move as needed. But as, as your finance experts have just noted, things are, things are looking good, things are looking steady, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
It seems like we might be, the timeline that was proposed seems like it might be to our advantage, right? It's, it's all coming fairly quickly, so maybe some of, if there is some bad things, maybe it'll happen after we've locked in the interest rates. I mean, not that I wish that on anyone or our economy, but you know, the, you know, the uncertainty is, is a little bit, you know, but I mean, I don't think that there's, I mean, a lot of things could happen in life that make things uncertain, right? I mean, it's not just now, this has always been the case.
Well, as Stacy indicated, though, you know, you're in a very good range of interest rates now. I mean, they've come down a bit the last couple of months, and so I think it's very calming to hear, you know, hear that comment that, that you're still at an attractive interest rate in the current market. So feel good to that extent. When we start, we, we've looked at this now over many months, and we've seen rates go up, and now coming back down, we feel much better, obviously.
Great. Thank you. Well, and the, thank you for explaining how that we would have a year if there were something that, you know, the water landing, which, you know, we're all prepared to grab those seat cushions and, no, that's all right. I listen to those, you know, this whole, whole business very carefully. I want to make, I'm always prepared. All right. Any other questions?
Question, just, thank you.
Yeah. Is there anything else that you wanted to share before we, or Connor, or anyone at the table?
I think maybe more on the exciting side. I don't smile that often, but I think if you look at October 14th is about six weeks away, I get excited thinking about, you know, we're, we're doing all this work in the background and getting financing and making sure that we're legally compliant and safeguarding the county, but if you've been out at the ranch recently, you'll see we have broken ground on some of the pay-as-you-go projects, and advancing this to kick off on the 14th will just but help us get the event lawn underway, and that's one step closer to 60,000 person festival lawn, a 6,000 person amphitheater, the new improvements coming to Blue Arena, the new event plaza, and I'm excited about that. So appreciate you, you all supporting the, the ranch master plan phase two and this team's work for what they're bringing to the table, and thank you.
Thank you, Connor. I think that's a really good reminder of why we're doing all this, right? As we dig deep into the, the financial piece, it's, it's going to be a great facility, and we're really excited about it as well. So anything further before we close out here? Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
Well, Connor, maybe you can have us as a board to come see some of these groundbreaking to kind of help us visualize what, what we're really, what this is all about. That would be helping us maybe take a deep breath, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Falls, anything?
Just to express gratitude for the careful and thoughtful analysis and working together with our finance folks and our ranch folks and the various tax consultants and so forth. It is exciting.
Lorenza, any closing words for us?
I know hours have gone into this, and I really appreciate the, the real digging in to getting accurate numbers on the project costs and on what's taxable and what would not be taxable. I think it feels like the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, you all have us as well prepared as we can be. And I know it's not been easy. We've given you a pretty short runway to get that done. So thank you for that, and for Lori, for coordinating our efforts. Lori has picked this up and run with it, and you would not know that she has not been through this process before with how educated and experienced she's become through this process. So kudos to you. Connor, can't wait to get started.
Yeah, no, we're definitely-
Nate, on behalf of Piper Sandler, as well as the financing team here with Stiefel and QTAC, the county officials have been great about helping us get everything accomplished in a short period of time. So it's been a joy working with Lori and Connor and everyone on the team, with William and every, yourself, and, and so thank you all very much for all you've put into this. So we'll make this as successful as possible for you as we can.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I, of course, with my head spinning with all this, thinking about this, I just want also to express my concern, my gratitude and my appreciation to all of you and working with county staff. You know, of course, I'm always think, already think so highly of Lori and Connor and Lori and Lorenza, and I, and our county attorney, Bill Rissou, I know would not, he would be really, I know he's very diligent and very, very helpful and keep an eye on things. So I just wanted to express my gratitude to all of you and the teamwork and the coming together because this is innovative, unique way for us to kind of move forward, but it is, I think, a good project for this wonderful facility or land that we have, the ranch, and we, I think we really have some great people in place, and I, I agree with you, the timing is starting to look like it's coming together at a good time. But my, my heartfelt gratitude and, and thanks for letting me, let us ask these questions because this is kind of outside of a normal county commissioner purview of understanding. So thank you, and, and the way this was presented, I, I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, thank you to everyone at the table. Really appreciate your help getting this done. And you know, these kind of meetings are really important as we're dealing with public funds, so that, you know, we don't just understand it, but the people that we serve also understand what we're doing with these dollars and that we're taking good care of these dollars and that we've, you know, asked the questions that we need to ask to feel comfortable doing this, because it's, it is a lot of money. So, so thank you all. We, we do appreciate the work that you've done and, and helping us and the public understand how we're moving forward, and we're excited about what we're going to be able to do with those dollars. So with that, I think we'll just adjourn now. It's 11:42. Thank you, everyone.